According. You're good to go, Melody.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, August 15th Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board Agenda. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening and welcome Kim Garrison, who's filling in for Jim this evening and helping us out. Thank you, Kim. We appreciate your help. We have a quarrel. And so I will call the meeting to order. You've posted meeting agenda. I have no changes that I'm aware of. Is there anyone else who sees anything that needs to be changed?
Need any milk for the tea?
Was that for me? I'm not, I don't think that was for me. All right, so we'll confirm the posted meeting agenda. You've all received Jim's meeting notes. Are there any comments or questions regarding that corrections? If there are none, could I have a motion to accept the meeting notes?
So moved, Michael?
Thank you, Michael. Second?
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean, and all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, extension, the motion carries. You have the draft August 1st minutes. We all had a chance to look at them? All right, does anyone have any corrections?
I think I think it neglected to mention that I had raised objections in the compliment application.
Okay.
And that I think it's important to not gloss over because that's why we had continued the hearing.
Okay. Gretchen, do you have that?
Yeah, I'll add that.
Okay, any other additions, corrections? All right. Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the August 1st draft minutes as amended?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. Second?
Craig.
Frank, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain since I was not present.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, correspondence and announcements. Gretchen, I believe you have an announcement you want to make about the Catherine Whitman application?
Yes, she is going to turn in her additional paperwork for the septic and wanted to have us schedule the public hearing for September 19th, if possible, so she can do the noticing.
You all recall that we had put this application on hold to a date to be determined, waiting for this information, so. Gretchen, are you looking, I'm sure you're looking ahead at the calendar. Is it your sense that we can accommodate it on that date?
Yes, as of right now, we only have one public hearing that date, so.
Does that need a motion? I think it needs a motion, doesn't it?
I believe it does.
So.
So moved, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. Second, please. Craig, thank you.
Craig.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of scheduling Catherine Whitman's application for, remind me again, Gretchen?
September 19th.
September 19th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstractions, motion carries. Oh my, well, it's, I have 6:04, and since we have no new applications, I'm going to recommend that we move now to the referrals at the end of our agenda. Since we have to wait until 6:15 for the public hearings. So first up, and I'm going to turn these over to you, Kim, to lead us through them, since I think you're probably familiar with all of them.
Yep.
And first up is Monahan, 8 Kipsburg and Drive, case number 1029 for a garage addition.
Yes, the applicant currently has a garage on their property. It's also just, and it's an attached garage, so part of their they want to expand their living room kind of into where the garage is now, and then move the garage closer towards the road, which is what is cost, requiring them to get an area variance for having the garage at the accessory structure, even though it is attached, projecting closer to the road and sorry, there's something in the waiting room, and I think there's another and then because it's in the setback for the front yard, there's also a front yard setback requirement as well. There is currently a Central Hudson what looks like a Central Hudson right-of-way or easement that is very close to the house, the property, and it looks like part of the garage might encroach upon that. The ZBA has asked for information as to whether Central Hudson is aware of this design and what their thoughts are on that. So they, the applicants have provided that they've been in touch with the Central Hudson, but we're still waiting for more details on that.
Planning Board members, have you had a chance to look at this information? Look at the application? Questions? Anyone see any issues with this? I believe, Kim, we probably have a draft response from Jim?
Oh, yes. Would you like me to put that up?
I think that would be terrific. Thank you.
Sure, let me just grab that. Sorry, let me.
No problem. Actually, I'll just give you a heads up that we'll one look at all of them on the screen.
Yeah, I just needed to get to that page.
Sure.
Alright, it's coming up now. Okay. Let me know if everyone can see it.
There isn't a drawing, right?
I can't, there's not a drawing attached to this. I can pull it up if you give me one second to find it on my
Sure.
thing.
So, Kim, we're still according to this, waiting for some additional information. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we're waiting, because they provided like a cover letter from Central Hudson, which stated that here's a licensing agreement, but the licensing agreement wasn't attached. So the ZBA did request that, and then we also just wanted to make sure that the Central Hudson was okay with the proposed design, and I haven't had any indication of that either.
Okay.
I just have one question. According to this, the applicant has applied for two building permits, one to convert an existing attached garage into living space, and another to construct a 20 by 16 garage, which I assume is a separate accessory structure. The living space presumably is not an accessory dwelling. It's apparently an extension, right, of the house?
Yes.
So the only, the only issue here is the positioning, I guess, of the addition.
Right, yeah, because the garage is attached, it's still, even though it's attached, it's still an accessory structure, and because now it projects closer to the to the front yard, both it sets off both front yard setback and the fact that the accessory structure is in front of the principal dwelling, so that it's, the two variances are based on the garage.
And Jim didn't think that there were any planning issues, and it doesn't seem to me that there would, there would be any planning issues here.
I would agree with you.
So the the referral response that Jim has prepared seems to make sense here.
Yeah, I just got it on my, on my computer. Let me see if I can pull it up. I'm just going to stop the screen. Hold on one second. Sorry, computer's moving a little slow.
I could read it.
Yeah, I was just pulling up the maps, if you wanted the, any drawings.
Thank you.
Yep, it's just taking a little while to load on my computer right now. Let's try this. See if this goes, it might still be loading. So this is their main house. And then you can see that what they want to do is they, their house kind of sits more on like a one-story house right here, and then they're building the garage out in front over here.
Yep.
So the garage is just going to be projecting, here's a, here's a good screen right here.
Yep.
So the dark gray is, and you can see the dotted line, that's the Central Hudson. And you can see that there's like that little corner that kind of goes into that, and then they're putting the driveway, the driveway is here, they're going to be removing that, and they're going to be putting in a new driveway here. So the outstanding question is just what Central Hudson, what their licensing agreement says to see if there's any prohibitions there, and if Central Hudson has any issues with this.
Thanks, Kim. Planning Board members, any questions?
Just to clarify, that little gray strip next to the addition, is that like an added deck entry or something?
Uh, no.
It was just, it was like.
Let me pull it up again.
Yeah, the space just.
Oh, yeah, I guess that is a little porch, because it, it's not up for a variance. Because the garage will be still projecting further, but yes, it does look like that's a new porch.
All right, others?
Looks good to me.
Kim, if we could just see Jim's draft resolution?
Yes. Melody, do you want me to read it, or do you want to just?
I think, I think we really, we get down to the, based on our review of the proposal, is that here's the response. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon referral by the zoning board of appeals, finds and requested variance raises no significant planning or environmental concerns, recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts. That's pretty typical for a referral of this type. Does anyone have any issue with this drafted referral response, or are we ready to make a motion?
I move that we accept this.
Thank you, Edna. Second, please. Thank you, Sean, all those in favor?
What'd you say?
Opposed, abstractions? Thank you. All right, thanks very much. The motion carries. Next up, we have a ZBA referral. Let's see what time are we at?
10:14.
All right, let's see if we can get through the second Dakota's referral.
Yep, and I'm just pulling that one, just getting that on my computer. So I will be able to provide those renderings, but it's pretty much just a pool. They want to put a pool in their backyard. It's going to be requiring a side yard setback. It's a pretty large property, it shouldn't really be visible from the road, and it, you know, just kind of fits into what a typical pool would fit in for a residential structure. And just letting it download. Then I'll be able to open it.
That rings again, would you answer that? This really seems very simple. I mean, it's nothing more than a side yard setback variance to install an in-ground pool.
Yeah, am I, is it sharing right now? No, hold on one sec. I got the wrong thing sharing. Here we are. Yeah, so it's just your typical pool. This is kind of the current layout of the property. So the pool will be kind of around this area. It looks like it is, it's been presented that it's pretty well wooded. And pretty well screened.
I move that we recommend the ZBA rely on their own study of the facts in this case.
So you are, we're just going to move Jim's draft resolution?
Yes.
Second, please.
Second, Michael.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstractions, the motion carries. Thank you. We will now return to the regular order of business and proceed to the first public hearing. That is Grinnell Street Properties, Grinnell Street Site Plan and Special Use Permit, Replacement of In Ground Swimming Pool. And I see Warren, and I see Victoria. I believe you're probably here to represent this application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Warren.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening. Warren, I'll turn it over to you to give us an update on where we are.
Very good. Thank you, Melie. So I had sent some updated drawings, a revised site plan, and a retaining wall design to the planning board, it looks like that's coming up now. Thank you. So since the last meeting, I think you know, we may have discussed it at the meeting. The existing, what we'll call a retaining wall on the northern edge, northeastern edge of the property is in poor shape. The buyers pointed out that some of the blocks had heaved and moved. It's not doing a very effective job as a retaining wall, and they raised the concern that by re-excavating and installing a pool again, you might be disturbing the ground and putting more pressure on this failing wall. So we looked at it and agreed, and the other issue that is the, this vegetation that sort of encompasses those blocks, I don't know if it's actually not weed, but we're assuming the worst that it is. So the plan is to remove the, those concrete blocks and the knotweed, and to construct a new reinforced concrete retaining wall entirely on the applicant's property. So it will be pulled off the property line and the footing, all of it, every aspect of it will be on the applicant's property, not on the buyer's property anymore. So that's what this drawing reflects at the northeastern edge. In addition, I had a conversation with the neighbor to the south, southwest, Carolyn Mark Blackwood. She pointed out that the existing fence there sort of starts on her property and then crosses over onto the applicant's property, and she thought while we're straightening things out and realigning things, we should realign that fence too. So we agreed to do that. So the changes on this drawing from the last drawing that the planning board saw are the, basically the north, northeast and the southwest or southeast corner, where we have basically realigned the fence between the applicant and Blackwood, and we're reconstructing, replacing the retaining wall between the applicant and brier. Previously, we had shown a new fence along Grinnell Street, pulling it back from the location of the existing chain link fence. It aligns with the fence on the Blackwood property at the south and is a more attractive fence, while being co-compliant for a pool of split rail with a mesh, and that fence would continue around the pool itself with gates with the appropriate hardware unlocking mechanisms. And, and to provide some screen between the pool and the briers property, we're suggesting that once the the knotweed is removed, that we plant some rhododendron, which will give some year-round screening between the applicant and the brier's property. So that is the basic change substance to the proposal. I'm happy to address questions or comments from the public and from the planning board.
All right, planning board members. I, we have not had another site visit. I know, Edna, I believe you were on the first site visit.
I was there with Joe. I just have one question. I remember reading, maybe it was the letter from the neighbor, some discussion about stormwater release either next to or through that wall that then goes down the cliff toward the rain, the train tracks. Is that correct?
There, there is a covert, well, Norman Brier is in the meeting, and he can address that. There is a covert installed by the town that runs from a a new catch basin diagonally under the brier's property. We're not going to connect into that. That's the sort of really a town issue. I did discuss this, both the issues at the site and the proposal with the highway superintendent who's responsible for this, he's aware of the circumstance. Everyone agreed that we shouldn't be doing anything on top of that covert for storm drain. So that's why, again, we pulled everything off the property line, and we will do all the work from the applicant's side of the fence, not from the brier's side. So we should not be disturbing the, the stormwater or the, the varied covert.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there other questions or comments from planning board members? Let me open it up to the public. Is there anyone, I see the briers are here. Is there something you'd like to add or question, or ask for more information about?
No, I think Warren covered everything. We're pleased with the adjustments.
Okay. Warren, I don't believe this met the deadline. Is that correct?
In terms of the revised submission, right, the, the two-week requirement prior to a meeting, that's correct.
Right, so we should treat this tonight as new information and continue the public hearing. Which is where I think we are. Edna, since you were there, and in light of this new information, do you think a revisit to the property is warranted, or does this satisfy any concerns that were raised?
I don't really see how another visit would be helpful in any way.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Give everybody a chance to review this and make sure that we've covered all the bases. Could I have that motion? And Gretchen, what would it be continued to?
September 19th.
Okay. Thank you, Edna. Second, please.
Sean, second.
Thanks, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, tension. The motion is carried forward, and we'll continue the public hearing and see you in a month.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for all the hard work. I know that this put a little bump in the road, but I, I appreciate everybody working together to get to a positive result. So thanks very much.
Also, just for the, for the record, Ms. Moore, sorry to interrupt, I just want the minutes to reflect that Tim Ross was also here. He's the engineer that prepared the retaining wall.
Okay.
For any questions anyone had about it specifically.
Absolutely. Thanks, Tim, for attending. It looks like you did a great job because there weren't any questions, so we appreciate that. All right, next up, Martin Gesase, 13 Mount Rudson Road, Site Plan Review and Approval for a Shed. And I see Martin is here. And well, yes, he is. I see you. Hello, Martin. Good evening. I think you go by Marty. Is that right? Well, maybe. Um, I am not hearing him. Martin, are you muted?
It's under is it under Moto G powers? That?
I believe so, yes.
Let's see if I can see anything on here. Yeah, I don't see any audio being connected. So I can't unmute him.
Okay, Martin, we don't, we don't have you on audio. We can't connect you. Can you double check to see if you can connect yourself?
Or maybe he can call in?
No, he can't hear.
Pardon?
I'm not sure he can hear you.
Martin, can you hear us? If you can, could you wave? Is that a wave or a nod? I'm not sure. Uh, we have.
I just sent him a quick chat. Internally, just to let him know we can't hear him.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
Would you like me to, oh, it says connecting to audio. They might be trying to connect.
Connecting to audio, it says.
Brought in the reserves.
And if need be, I can always put up the application and just do a brief summary, a sentence is up for public hearing.
Could you put it up in the meantime, Kim?
Yes, I can. I was just wanted to make sure I could see everybody's. Just make sure I was looking.
Why don't you go ahead and do that? Michael and I both made a site visit, and while we're trying to connect. All right, do you want to review it, Kim? Just give us an overview and.
Yeah, so. My understanding is that there is an existing shed right around here. It's currently a 10 by 10 shed. They want to expand it to be a 12 by 24 shed. They're not removing it, and they're just expanding it, but the rear of it won't be moving from where it currently is, so there's no additional need for their, any rear yard setback. And these are just some renderings that they had. This is your typical shed. And that's that's the summary.
All right, okay, Michael and I made a site visit along with George Baker and Sharon from the CAB. I believe you were all copied with the report from the CAB, which was very brief. Michael, would you like to comment on the site visit?
Sure, we went out to take a look, and it is fairly simple and straightforward. It's there's sufficient screening along the rear property lines, so no one's going to see it, but it's a very simple, unobtrusive structure. I don't see that there's really any issues with it from a planning standpoint whatsoever. And I think it's probably the right place to put it for, given his property, and he's going to be using it for to store garden equipment, tractor, things of that sort. So I, I don't see any issues with this from a planning standpoint.
I would, I would totally agree. The only thing I would add is that this, the back part of this property from the house slopes down a little bit toward, I mean, we don't have topo line here, but it drops off at the rear of the house down to the shed itself, and that makes it even less, I mean, it wouldn't be visible anyway because it's directly behind the house, but the way the property slopes down, it sort of sits down in a little tiny little valley there, so I don't see any issues with this whatsoever.
I see that Jim mentioned that topo lines were not on the site plan. Melody, do you think that this, those could be waived, given what you have said about your site plan visit?
Yes, I do. Michael, do you agree?
I absolutely agree, yes.
You know, what you can't see here, and I don't think was particularly well detailed, is there, is always, already somewhat of a pad that was there. You know, he had kind of a platform to the right of the shed where he parked equipment as well, so there's very little disturbance that's going to take place. Are there any other comments or questions from other planning board members? Kim, is there anyone in the waiting room from the public wishing to speak to this application?
I do not see anybody. And I still, I still don't have. Oh, do I have audio? I might. Let me see if Marty can speak. Let me see if Marty can speak. It, it does show audio up.
Marty, are you there? I know you're there. I can see you. It's just kind of a silly question, but can you hear us? If you can give a thumbs up, if you can hear us at all, we could update you on what we've accomplished. Okay, well. Well.
I can start to come through.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, finally.
Oh, well, Marty. I think you're just in time for the vote, which I expect to be positive. So thanks to Kim's effort, we were able to present your application. We gave the report from Michael and I and the C A B and there's no one here from the public wishing to comment. So I'm about to ask for a motion to approve the resolution. Kim, if you could put up. I've got to close the public hearing.
Yes, please.
Yeah, let me have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second, Edna.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. Tensions, motion to close the public hearing passes. And now we have the draft approval resolution. I'm not going to read it all to you. Finds opposed work to be consistent. Expect finds the word intended to be consistent, authorizes the planning board chair to stamp and sign. I don't see any issues with this. Can I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second.
Second.
Thanks, Craig. All those in favor?
Hi.
Melody, I think you have to pull the board.
I will pull the board. All right. Um, Michael.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Delise.
Hi.
Sean.
Hi.
Edna.
Hi.
And I vote I. Did I get everybody? I think I did. All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Marty. Sorry for the interruption. Good luck with your shed. Okay. Uh, the last public hearing for this evening is. Good luck, Marty.
Thanks, bye.
Uh, Tannery Place, Roger Smith, 437 Route 308, site plan and special use permit. Pool, tennis court. Uh, good evening, Roger and Mark.
Good evening.
How are you both?
I'm fine.
Good. I'll turn it over to you, Mark. I think you're here to update us.
Yes. So Kim, thanks for bringing those up. I think if you could first bring up the, the overall site plan, please.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Uh, so just to refresh the board, this is a, this is actually an application for amended site plan. For Roger Smith, Tannery Place. Uh, property located on the northwesterly side of New York State Route 308. Property size is a little more than 15 acres. There was a previous site plan special permit. And multiple area variance approval for this project. Uh, and it also included. You know, the previous project also included uh, the attachment of a garage to the main residence. There are also two accessory dwelling structures on the property. One located to the east of the main residence closer to Route 308 and then one further to the north. Just along the northerly property line, which uh, it's just referred to as the barn. And, um, you know, both are accessories to, uh, dwelling units, accessory structures with dwelling units. So those were uh, previously approved by site plan special app, permit application with this board. Uh, this amended site plan or just a resubmission of a site plan special permit application is, are for three items. The first item is to the you know, to the north of the uh, just it's, it's the actually the location of the tennis court. And so the application is to actually remove a portion of that tennis court and replace it with a platform tennis court. And there's a you know, a small rectangle that's located in the a northerly portion of that existing tennis court with a cloud around it. It, it, it only even takes up, it'll take up less than a third of what exists right now. It'll be certainly a great improvement. To the property. This will be newly constructed with you know, the existing court and fencing being removed and then replaced with the, the platform. Tennis court and also fencing and uh, lighting associated with it. I note that the lighting, uh, current lighting or the lighting proposed with this application is conforming uh, to the town's regulations with regard to height and just, uh, you know, uh, and, and downward facing fixtures that are only illuminating the court itself. As I said, the balance of the tennis court will be removed. A second item is actually the pool. So there's an existing pool, uh, in-ground pool located uh, just to the south of the barn. Um, and it's in an enclosed area with stone wall and landscaping. All, all landscaping and stone, uh, the stone wall remains unchanged. Um, the purpose is just to construct a new pool. It's more of a uh, a lap pool than what exists right now. And it's generally in the same location. I think it shifts to the east, maybe about a foot by about a foot or two. So, uh, basically in, in the same location with minimal disturbance. And then finally, you know, the third part of this application is with regard to some improvements uh, to the barn and specifically, uh, those improvements are uh, you know, uh, are related to exterior windows that are associated with the barn. And we've, uh, submitted, uh, you know, multiple drawings of for all the improvements that I just, uh, you know, briefly discussed, uh, there, you know, detailed plans for the tennis court. Uh, the, the pool is just basically, you know, schematically shown. You know, in, uh, on this site plan. And then there are also uh, detailed drawings and renderings of the barn. And so I think what I'd like to do at this time is, uh, you know, for discussion of the barn is turn it over to Roger, who's you know, very familiar with all the, the history and the, and, and the details of the barn and work that's been undertaken so far and accomplished. And then what is being proposed with this application? And I think Rogers is, you know, best to discuss that. So take it away, Roger.
Thank you, Mark. Um, good evening, everyone, and I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, well, first of all, thank you for, uh, sending, we, we received this afternoon, um, a, a memo from H A P A C. That is very thoughtful in, in terms of, uh, of, of providing some input and, and guidance to us. And uh, it comes also with a, a link to an article about preserving barns that was written by Michael Auer. And I thought it would be useful for me to use the, uh, the, the framework in that article that was shared with us. For me to frame my, my response to it. So as many of you are aware, uh, who've been following this, this project, uh, we are basically complete with the main house and uh, the vast majority of what we were trying to accomplish in, in the main house uh, was to uh, consistently apply the excellent quality and architectural sort of theme uh, that comes from the Greek revival period in the, in, in the late 1890s. And that was a pretty relatively straightforward roadmap for us because uh, there were renovations that were done subsequently uh, that were not following in that style or at that level of quality. And so, uh, we had that as a roadmap for us in terms of, uh, of, of doing our renovation work. Um, and, uh, with the guidance of, of Michael Byrd and, uh, and Will Cut builders, we were able to uh, to accomplish that. Uh, in contrast, the, the barn is, is, is really a different challenge. Sometime in the 1980s, approximately a third of the barn, uh, was demolished to make way for the pool. And if we could go back to the first uh, picture. Uh, the first page, um, that would be great. And, uh, it was converted into a pool and party house. And at different points, there was a indoor in-ground lap pool. Um, there was a full gym. There was a sauna and significant exterior work was, was done. And, uh, it's really, I think, a pity that that, that there was not sort of architectural review going on during the, this, this work. Because I, I think if, if we had uh, a lot of information and pictures, we'd, we'd, we'd know, we'd have a better guide of, of what to do with this building as we, we did with the main house. So the, the article goes on to say, uh, that it's important to understand that the history. And fortunately, Michael Byrd is friendly with Frost family, um, who lived there in the 1970s. And, um, uh, he and I have both had, uh, conversations with them. There really wasn't, is not a good clear record of what the barn looked like or how it was used. We, we only know from looking at the aerial photos that exist on parcel access that there was this big addition. And as we look at the barn, where the pool is and you see the ping pong table, the, these are the listing photos, by the way, prior to us purchasing the house. Um, you'll note, uh, off to the left-hand side, that, that whole wall there. Um, and where the exposed, um, brick wall is, uh, that, that was where the addition came off of the barn. So that's that's all new siding and exterior siding. Um, based on, on what we've seen from the aerial photos. So, um, the Frost family noted that the barn was not safe in that era and, and, uh, the kids were not supposed to use it, although reports are. They did use it when they were not, uh, being supervised. Uh, in any event, the, the next owner uh, was the owner before us. Uh, was really focused on transforming the space and the uh, design aesthetic of the, the barn and the doors and windows and so forth. But a little less focus on the structural, um, elements. Which we discovered, um, once we, uh, started seriously looking at, um, doing the renovation work. So there are seven points that Mr. Auer, uh, makes in his article, and I, I think it's important to touch on them just briefly. Uh, the first objective is to preserve the historic setting of the barn as much as possible. And he goes into quite a bit of lengths of trying to keep the area surrounding the barn looking the same. And, and as, as, as you can see in these photos. Um, and then in those that follow, uh, significant landscaping work has been done around the, the area and the pool. Um, and clearly, uh, that, that is at this point, um, irretrievable. The second point is to rare repair and repaint historic siding rather than cover barns with artificial siding. Uh, we obviously agree with this wholeheartedly. The third point is to repair, uh, rather than replace historic windows whenever possible. And avoid blocking them or covering them up. And, um, I think it's clear from these photos and for those who made the site visit will remember uh, because the framing is exposed now on the inside. Uh, these windows and all the frames around them are all, um, done with two by fours and clearly uh, they are a product of the 1980s. And, uh, there's nothing historic whatsoever about these openings in terms of the uh, the, um, design of them, uh, or, or the as far as the size, as far as we, um, can, can tell. Um, the fifth point is, uh, to consider a new addition only if it is essential to the continued use of the barn. Um, we really don't have any, um, additions here. Um, there is one, um, comment made in the H A P A C report, um, about an unfinished porch, uh, which is on the north wall, which, um, we, um, are proposing to uh, to finish. Um, they have all of these support piers, which are made in the exact same uh, style, uh, as one can see in, in the the, the stone, um, here. And if we can skip forward to, uh, to, um, pages. So you'll see this stonework that surrounds the pool. It's literally all over our, our property. There must be hundreds of feet of this stonework. And the pillars that are there to support this, um, exterior porch, um, which are already fully built um, are in this exact same style. And so although it, it may not be consistent aesthetically with a historic barn. Um, they certainly are, uh, very consistent with everything else that's on the property and indeed the staircase that leads, um, up to them. The, the next points have to do, uh, well, the next point is uh, has to do with uh, retaining the interior spaces and features as much as possible. And if we can, yes, this is a perfect slide, um, here. I'll, I'll point out the, the one room which we did make some changes to. Uh, which have already been approved is the game room. Uh, and that is being turned from a game room, um, into, uh, um, two bedrooms. Uh, and that was reviewed, reviewed and approved before. I think you can see that this is not a historic. The interior here is not historic, but if we back up one slide, go to the one before, uh, yeah, that's a perfect. Uh, as you can see, there's a lot of really interesting and nice architectural elements that are on the inside, uh, here. Um, and we are very committed, obviously, to, um, preserving these and the work that we've done so far has really been dedicated to uh, replacing rotten beams. And some of these beams are enormous. They're heavy. Uh, but some of the key ones, particularly on the walls, uh, have been, are rotten and we had to, to replace them. And that actually is the seventh point in, in his document here about retaining as much historical or historic internal structure as possible. And, uh, we couldn't agree more. It is a, a very. as possible. And we couldn't agree more. It is a, a very important aspect of this building and, and maintaining it is is, 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 is really vital, we feel. So I think in, in summary, and thank you for the, oh, there's one last point that I wanted to make that came from the, the Haypack. If we can go back to the first slide. So you'll note in the picture where the pool is, there's a partially exposed wall. And I learned today, I did not know this, that this is a bank barn. And it's called that because there is a different grade that's being supported by that wall. And on the inside, it's not well represented in the photos, but there's a beautiful stone wall that goes up and down the inside. And one of the comments of, from Hayback was to leave that wall exposed as it is now. With the thought that this was original. But it actually, it isn't original. And the reason why we need to make a change there is there is no insulation from the elements nor animals from getting in and out of the barn through that wall as it currently exists. And so that was the reason why we felt it was important to to, to make a change to, to that aspect. So in summary, you know, we've inherited a, an, what was an unstable barn. It's not unstable anymore. But it's something that was transformed into a pool house, you know, really almost forty years ago. And I, I know it's part of the theme of the article is about returning things to their original agricultural use. And I think at this point that it, it's unrealistic to, to think that we, we could do that with this structure. And you know, there, there are a lot of historic aspects of this structure, which we are very committed to saving. Including the, the, the support structure itself. However, based on the history of this building at this point in its evolution, adding some of, some new sort of barn-like design elements seems beyond the scope of preservation. And at this point, we are committed to, to trying to preserve it. But not trying to return it back to an original state that we are really unclear as to what it is or what it should be. So thank you for your patience and listening to my long explanation, but this is a, an important structure and it's something that should have scrutiny. I wish it had had more scrutiny before I had ownership. But anyway, thank you for your, your patience.
Thank you, Roger. Mark, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this time, nobody.
Am I, Gretchen, you've informed me that we're still, there's still some outstanding information. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what Jim had asked if we had received. It was the updated stuff for the tennis court and the lighting.
We, tho- those have been, those have been available, those, those were with the, the original submission. Everything was updated.
Cause that's what he had asked about when I had spoken to him.
Does he have that in his meeting notes, Gretchen?
That I did not see.
Yes. Would you like me to pull up his meeting notes?
He, he says that we should have cut sheets for the lighting. Jim, Jim's notes say that.
Okay, I did not submit cut sheets for the light. The, the, the lighting is, is shown on the, is, are on the on the tennis plans. And they, you know, they specify the light types. And they are, they meet the requirement of the maximum fifteen foot height.
And if you go back, it looked to me in his notes that he was noting that three things were outstanding.
Yes. Detailed plans for the pool area. Pool and patio will utilize same footprint, what's currently existing. Renderings of the pool area. And the details of the pool surround, such as the patio. And pictures of the existing site showing locations proposed for modifications to help better understand the existing conditions.
Okay, with regard to the pool, I, I don't underst- stand how.
I, I, I don't think he's suggesting in number four that we don't have information. But I think in three and five, he's asserting that we, we were looking for information that hasn't been submitted.
Okay. The, I guess, you know, with regard to, you know, locations of fixtures for site modifications. Sean Jones was on a site visit. And, and truthfully, I did not, you know, I did not see these notes of Jim's, so it's my error in not providing that information.
Mark, did you want to go over the lighting plan? I, I have the tennis plans up.
That's fine, we can, but there won't be cut sheets for the lights.
Does the planning board have any questions on the lighting outside of the cut sheets?
No, but I have a question about the pool.
All right, let's, let's.
The pool is only, the pool is only shown on the site plan. So if you go to my site plan, it shows, it shows the location of the new pool.
Well, my understanding from, from the discussion is that the fence for the pool is a rock wall.
That's correct.
And so I don't know that we have any information about the height of the rock wall. Does it meet requirements?
No, you do not have that.
Does it completely circle the pool with?
It does. And there are gates, there's a, there's a gate, there are two gates. Actually, three gates that for, you know, ingress and egress to the pool between, and, and, you know, affixed to the stone wall.
Then do we know what the height of the stone wall is?
I don't specify that.
Okay. I was looking, I, I'm, I did not, I've not had a chance to read the Haypack report. Only receiving it today. So I was looking for something. I thought they made a reference here, something to the stone wall, but I might be imagining that.
I didn't see that in the report, Melody. I only saw a reference to the, the actual structure. You know, they were just.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying. I could be totally wrong.
I think that we're making reference to the exposed stone wall that was. And, and so what the, what the prior owner had done is he extended what was the foundation wall of the bank. And continued that wall and, and that's where they had removed the prior structure. So that, that is what, and I was responding to, to that point when, when I gave my long explanation.
Um, well, between Jim's notes and, and Edna's questions, I do think we're missing some detail that would be important to add to the application.
Understood.
But let me also open it up to planning board members for other questions and comments.
Melody, I, I just, I'd like to comment. I did a, a site visit. I think it was earlier this week. No, it was last week. Today's Monday. Couple of different things, just the current lighting is not conforming to our current code. I do know that we do need more details based upon the questions today, but it'd be a significant improvement. The current lighting is most likely shining on the neighbors next door and out to three oh eight. It did go through, they showed me a beam they had to replace. And if you could, I couldn't even tell it was replaced because they went out of their way to find something that was looking very conforming to historical replacement. So I did, I did notice that the barn is, I think the pictures would do justice of the amount of foundation work that you guys have done to stay in the barn back up. In many places, I, I don't know how you guys got concrete in there, but it was definitely a lot of work and a lot of to get to where you are. I would also like to state that the barn was quite infested with mice and bats, and there's remnants of that everywhere within. So I do think that Haypack has some, some points that are necessary to be addressed, but I will say they've done a lot of care in, in, in keeping the building up. And to, and off of their previous projects, I was not around when that previous garage got approved, but it blends in quite nicely. If anyone had a chance to see the before and after. You'd barely know there was an addition put on to the previous house for the garage and matching the windows, everything. So I do know they're trying to do the right thing. I think the best thing that we could do is continue to give the guidance as they've been receptive. So they can get their project going.
Okay, Sean, who went with you on the site visit?
Delise was scheduled to go with me. Unfortunately, she had a change of plans due to her work schedule, but she was looking to also take a chance to get out there.
Okay, I just didn't want to miss somebody else if they were on the visit with you. Other planning board members, comments, questions?
Well, what more have we asked for? I know I'd like to see more about the fence around the pool and the cut sheets for lighting. What else are we asking for?
I believe those were the major things that Jim identified. Kim, do you see anything else?
You said lighting and the rendering. And then I think existing site showing where the proposed modification should be, the existing site conditions.
Could you repeat that, Kim?
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put, I, I think he wanted to kind of show kind of like a little bit of like a before and after the existing site condition so that you have a better idea as to what's being changed. I'll pull up the thing again.
So I don't, I don't know how better to show it than through the site plan that I prepared.
Pictures of existing site showing the locations proposed.
Oh, photos?
Yeah. That sounds, that's, I didn't speak to Jim myself, so I'm just going off of this memo.
The email that I got, he had said, included a cut of the tennis court lights, pictures of the existing site and details on the pool and surrounding area.
Hello, this is Mike Walsh with Walcott Builders. Am I allowed to interrupt real quick?
I'd like first to get comments from the planning board, Mike, and then I'll circle back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, planning board? Mark, I, Mark, are you understanding what? I'm sorry that we're having to convey this through Gretchen, from Jim through Gretchen to you, but I'm sure, I expect we're going to continue the public hearing. And I just think perhaps a conversation with Jim yourself to clarify exactly what he's looking for. I think I understand, but I don't want to speak for him.
Understood. Thank you.
Is that acceptable to you?
Uh, yes.
Okay, anyone else before I go back to Mike?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment that, you know, I really appreciate that the applicant has taken such an interest in the historic fabric of this building and recognizes the importance of the agricultural structure and being able to maintain its, its agricultural character as best he can. You know, given the, the changes that have happened over time. And, you know, I, I, I would encourage him to continue with that guidance that he's received from the National Parks Service with the preservation brief. It's all really good stuff. And about the lighting, I, I think Mark had commented that the lights are dark sky compliant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that, you know, for me, that would be the important feature to those lights is that they, they not be reflecting light back up to the sky.
Thanks, Craig. Mike? Mike from Walcott?
Hi, Melody. Thank you. Okay. Um, I just, because we're contracted with Roger Smith for the repairs and reconstruction of the barn, and we're involved in the pool work as well. We don't have, you know, an architect or landscape designer who's involved with the pool. So we really can't create renderings for the, you know, replacement of the existing pool with a new pool in the same location. We can do, you know, a bit of a hand drawn site plan that shows the pool and, you know, stone pathways. And we can take measurements of the existing stone wall and existing grades. But, you know, what other information on the pool would you require so we can get that from the contractor?
Yeah, and I, I would also add that it is not our intent to, to change the the, the point of replacing the pool is that it's not a particularly high quality pool to begin with. Number one, number two, the shape of it is not conducive for swimming laps. And so the the shape of it is changing to, to conform, but otherwise it is largely a replacement of the, of the, the pool. And it's not a reimagining of the space from a design point of view.
I, I appreciate that. However, you know, and again, I apologize for not having heard this directly from Jim. I think he's looking for very specific information detailing what is proposed to change. So that the site plan accurately reflects that. And when we go ahead and approve it, and then I go ahead and sign, we're all sure what the changes are. And Edna's asking specific questions about the height of the stone wall and other things that I, I think are important to document in the application itself. Kim, anything to add there?
No, I do think that, you know, I know, I can appreciate you don't have an architect on board, but I do think renderings are very important. Especially for restored project, uh, property.
So you, this is Mike from.
Let, let's, unless planning board members have any specific requirements that they would like added, I would, I would be personally happy to defer to Jim to let him discuss with Mark exactly what level of detail he'd like. Michael, from your perspective, the building department and the zoning department, what would you add in terms of what you'd like to see?
Basically, when it comes to construction, obviously, the design and the work is going to be very different than what the planning board looks at. So that's a whole different energy code and universal building code. Ideally, what we try to do, what I try to do is see whether or not applications are eligible to come before the planning board or variants is needed. But not to make any discretion or determinations of what would or would not be desirable in a given application, something like that. That, that's really the planning board's responsibility rather than either the zoning officer, the building department. So I, you know, from that standpoint, I tend to defer to the planning board. As a planning board member, I think the more information we can get on the, what the barn was, what's left of what it was and what's being proposed, I think is very important. I mean, I have an old barn, which basically has been repaired, but it's still the same old barn. It always was, it was built back in eighteen sixty-seven. So I have the benefit of knowing exactly what was there, even if it fell off, at least it's in front of it. I think the more information as a planning board member, especially on historic structures that we can get, we know we need as much information as possible. And we know we need to know to the very best of the applicants' ability to tell us what they're going to do and how it's going to be integrated into their project. So that we know exactly what we're. So that we know exactly what we're approving, and we can have a pretty good idea of what the finished product is going to look like.
Uh, Mark, why don't, uh, Jim is away all week.
Okay.
Why don't we, um, try to circle back to him and get some more specific details in terms of what he feels. I, I don't think we're very far apart. Um, I, I think we just need some more details on changes to the pool and, um, some other specific information.
Melody, can I just add one thing, just, and maybe this is, by the way, I'm very sorry I couldn't be there, it was a pivot for my children, unfortunately, but um, the, I know we referenced that it was a bank barn and that wall that might have to get taken down because of an invasion of pests, which makes a lot of sense, but maybe, and maybe this is already assumed, but some imagery around that. And then the only question I would have is if it's removed, is it being put back once it's insulated, or is the, is the grade changing?
I, am I, am I correct that we're talking about two different things here, though? The stone wall that's related to the bank barn is different from the stone wall surrounding the pool, am I correct?
That is, that is correct, and I'm, I'm sorry that I, um, may have, the, the HAPAC uh, report makes reference to the fact that, um, about two inches of that wall has been chipped away so that the siding can continue to cover up the wall. And that is the change that is, um, uh, being, uh, proposed. Um, it is most certainly not removing that wall, which is, uh, a, not only a structural element, but from an interior uh, uh, point of view, it's, it's a lovely design element, so, no, it's just a matter of how to sort of deal with the corner of that house, um, so that, uh, that, that, uh, he, he can be retained and the rodents can be kept away.
And I think that's separate from the detailed information about the pool that we're asking for.
That's correct.
Uh, Melody, just a question with regard to the HAPAC report and, you know, Rogers', um, you know, narrative and explanation. Do, do the board members have any comment about that? I mean, HAPAC reports specifically referenced uh, you know, window types and that are, um, different than what are being proposed, is there?
I have, I, I, Mark, I said earlier, personally, I haven't read it in detail.
Okay.
I didn't see it until late this afternoon, I was out all day, and it came in, and I, I, I'm not prepared to comment.
Yeah, um, I, I did read it, and one, one thing that's not clear to me, this keeps being referred to as a historic building, and, you know, everything has a history, is this, uh, given any specific designation as being a local landmark, is it on the national register? Um, it, you know, is there, is there anything that, uh, gives it a special distinction? Are you applying for, uh, any kind of a, uh, a tax incentive to, um, complete the work in a particular way?
No, uh, we are not applying for a tax incentive, um, and I am not aware at all of this structure being on any kind of registry or, um, any, any kind of designated, uh, historic place. I, I.
Well, I think, I think it has local, I'm, I'm fairly certain it has local designation, because I believe I've seen the paperwork on that, but I can't speak to how much higher it may go.
How, how does one, uh, dis- discover that sort of thing at?
Well, I bel- I believe it would have been included in the multi, uh, the, the multiple district designation for the town. Um, I, it certainly would be on file at town hall, and I can, I can look for that information. Um, and just to verify, um, but I work, I, I believe Nancy Kelly sent us that information when you came before us the first time.
Uh, I, it's, I'm sorry, I, I, um, it's in the comprehensive plan, and there's a diagram, and I believe it's number thirty six on the diagram. So that would answer that, that would answer that question.
Yeah, so it'd be in the multi-resource district, but we can follow up on that, Roger.
Great, thank you, Melody.
Uh, but it, it sounds like from what you're saying, that the windows that you, uh, that were there when you, um, purchased the property are the ones that you're replacing, and that any, um, you know, hit, any attempt at making a, a historically appropriate, um, uh, replacement would really just be conjectural, so there's no, um, you know, there, there were no windows there when it was an agricultural building.
Well, we have no, no way of, 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 of knowing how to do that history. And, uh, and that really is what makes this different than, than doing the house, where the house, we had a pretty clear roadmap of, of, of how to, to make it consistent. Um, uh, and, and, and what would be appropriate, but, but here, it, it, it's almost as if we're trying to, um, make something look barnsy, um, which I think is maybe appropriate, um, but it's not sort of, it's not clear that we're, um, uh, preserving something, uh, or restoring something back to its original state, um, it's, and, and that I, I think is, um, it becomes very subjective, uh, as to where to draw that line and, and what's appropriate. And again, I, I think it's, it's a reminder of how important this process is in dealing with a structure like that, and had this process been in place forty years ago, um, we wouldn't be in this complicated position today.
Right. Okay, anything else, folks? Um, Kim, is there anyone in the waiting room wishing to speak from the public?
I don't, let me just pull it up, I think everyone, there's nobody in the waiting room, everyone's here.
All right, um, so I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Gretchen, to what date?
September nineteenth.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second, Delise.
Thank you, Delise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post abstention, the motion carries. All right, Mark, we'll be in touch, and, um, sorry to delay this, um, but we'll get there.
Thank you.
Melanie, what, what date is it continued to?
I think she said the nineteenth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, all right, thank you very much. We'll be in touch, thank you, and thank you, Roger, for your detailed explanation, it's very helpful. Um, we will now go on to the last agenda item, that is the, uh, ZA referral for Dave's Tree Service sign permit. Uh, Kim, can you share?
Yeah.
Uh, that with us, please?
One second, just letting it load.
Mark, I believe you're hanging around for this as well, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks. Mark, do you want to speak to this? Kim, I believe you've also done some research on it as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to the two of you.
My, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, so, this, uh, this, uh, application is a si- it's a sign application for a Dave's Tree Service. This was in, uh, site plan special permit application that was, uh, I believe started in two thousand and it been two thousand twenty, I'm not sure, but, uh, approved by the planning board in two thousand twenty one, uh, went through, um, you know, site plan special permit, uh, application, site plan and special permit was granted by the planning board um, on the approved plans, um, and Kim, you can actually page through the, uh, unless you want, uh, is that, uh, board members familiar with the property, uh, located on the, you know, uh, northwesterly side of Route nine G, um, you know, um, just to the, uh, north of Four Brothers Pizza. Um, and this, this site was developed for Dave's Tree Service, it included access off of nine G, um, you know, construction of a, um, of a, a building for, to, um, house his, uh, his equipment, uh, his tree servicing equipment. Uh, it's just noted that there's no actual servicing equipment on this, he does that at his other, uh, location across the river in Ulster County. Uh, uh, approval was gained by the health department, the site has been constructed. Um, uh, the, there's a CO, um, that's been issued for the building and septic, so there's, it's a, uh, you know, it's an operating business right now, and so then what's also uh, shown on this site plan is a location of a sign, and that sign is located on the north side of the entrance um, within, within the, within this property, if, Kim, if you could zoom, zoom in a little bit at that, I think you were, were really close with the arrow there. With the, we referenced the location of the sign. Thank you, yeah, it's, right, you'll see it, there's a small rectangle, it's twenty feet off of the, off of the, um, right of way line, twenty foot to the, um, to the west, and that's the, that's the propos- that was the approved location of the sign, and that is the, uh, location of the sign that, that is being proposed. Um, next drawing, please?
Is there a next, I, oh, yes, there is.
I believe there's, there's, we have a next drawing is a, if you could zoom out a little bit, Kim, there's a sign detail.
Yeah.
That should be shown, right, and so there it is. So where it says Dave's Tree, yeah, that's it.
Just getting it lower.
Right, so there's, uh, this is a, uh, a detail of the sign. Um, you know, it's stone and steel, uh, proposed stone and steel construction. Uh, I, I do know that, um, the I'm trying to, to, there, there will, there will be no illumination with the sign. Um, it'll, uh, Dave has decided, though, uh, no lighting is required, so there'll be no illumination with the sign. And, uh, this.
So that detail that's here, ground mounted LED goes away?
It goes away, no, there'll be, there'll be no lighting at all.
Okay.
And so that'll be adjusted, and, um, this, uh, uh, detail was submitted to the zoning administrator, uh, for review of the sign. Um, sign requirements in the code, and I believe it was determined that it complies with the so, with the sign requirements of the code.
That, that is correct.
And, um, so that, that's it.
Um, Kim, anything to add?
Um, so, uh, Michael, as the zoning enforcement officer, asked me a question because there are two billboards that are on this site, uh, that are not owned by Dave's Tree Service. Um, I did, so their question was, is that included in total signage, because that would affect if there's a variance needed. So, um, the answer is no, because it's, um, there was in nineteen sixty five, it's what's called the Beautification Act, it's actually, um, if there are, uh, certain signs that are part of the, um, highway, uh, uh, I for- I say, I forgot what the exact words are, I don't have the notes in front of me, but basically, they're a state preempted. Um, so they are not included, um, they are preempted from the sign regulation, so they are not included in the sign total.
Um, Kim, did you say that there were two billboard signs?
Uh, yes, I, I believe that's what I was told.
I, I believe there's only one, um, there's one that's above, above the hip, you know, uh.
Yeah, I, I only recall one, and I think that was the very elongated rectangle to the north, or to, to the top side.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what I was thinking, I, I apologize if it's, uh, one or two, but either way, they're both, uh, that particular billboard is exempt, that's the what I was referring to.
There, there is, there is.
Two as well.
There, there is another billboard, but it's to the south, towards Four Brothers, and that is actually on another piece of property. So it, it's, there is another billboard there, and it's, it's tucked up against the woods, but it's to the south, but that's not located on, uh, on this property.
I was just referring to the one, I, it, it looked like two, but it's the elongated one.
Yep, yes, it is.
Yeah.
I thought it was two, and in some occasions have been used for different, two different messages on that one space, because of the size.
Uh, okay. Irregardless, if we're following Kim's comments, it's exempt from consideration in the square footage requirements for the sign.
Yes, because, uh, basically what it is, is that the town of Rhinebeck prohibits billboards.
Right.
But, uh, because of it being part of the Beautification Act, it is exempt from the sign regulations. And when I also read through the sign regulations, the way it's worded in terms of signage is, um, those that are for the, the business itself. So, um, even though they're on Dave's Tree Service property, they are not part, they are not advertising for that business.
Okay, planning board members, questions, comments?
Wasn't there some discussion, uh, when the application was originally presented about the possibility of removing that billboard once the property was purchased?
My under- my, my recol- yes, Ed, no, the conversation took place, my recollection was that Dave was under contract. Um, Mark will confirm that or not. I think Dave expressed his interest and willingness to not continue that contract when he was able to, but I don't know the status of that.
Uh, that is correct, nobody, and I, I'm unaware of the, you know, the status of that also.
Okay, I, I don't think he controlled it, Edna, I think we asked him about that, and he, and he too said he would like to see it gone, but I, I, I thought he had a legal obligation to maintain it. I could be mistaken, but that's my memory.
I'd be interested in knowing the answer to that, he's made such an effort to have a very good looking property there, and it seems like it would be a benefit to remove it if that's possible.
Yes, as being that it's part of the Beautification Act, it is, uh, exempt, uh, perhaps if it's under contract between Dave and the owner of the sign, that could be happening, but, uh, the town, if they were to try to remove it, it kind of gets a little bit into a thorny legal issue. If the town were to require it based on the sign regulations, just again, because it's, it's, uh, of its location, and, um, it's, you know, it's not that, not all billboards are exempt, it's just this particular one is on a particular section of the road that, um, the exemption applies to.
Okay, um, all right, uh, I will say I think it's a handsome sign. So, um, Kim, do you have the draft referral?
Yes. Is this, uh, go down? Is this the all, I, I'm sorry, is this all the, the?
Uh, usually, you know, this is his, uh, explanation, I think, and then there we go. Michael, um, he's saying we anticipate there will be more work on this project required before it can be.
I don't quite know what that refers to, it's an interesting sign, if you look at it, it's not a solid background. It's basically letters on, basically, metal, uh, branches. Primarily, there really isn't a solid background to it, so it's a little hard to detail exactly how it fits in with our current, current regulations. Uh, I found, basically, I was just looking at the lettering primarily, since I didn't have a solid base to work from, and, uh, it seemed to be, if not exactly meeting our requirement, it's awfully close.
What is his referral, is, is his referral, I, I, I don't see that, Kim?
What? Can we zoom it in a little bit more? Sorry, let me go back. Melody, which referral are you asking for?
Generally, Jim does a draft referral for us. And usually it's that the zoning, you know, in this case that we like the sign, we don't like the sign that-
It does say at the end of the memo, if the planning board determines that the sign is acceptable as proposed, then a referral comment to that effect can be submitted. Basically, he can write it up or you guys can do that kind of on the spot, I guess.
This is similar to the Kip's Tavern referral on the sign for the Kip's Tavern at the Old China Roads. It's the same situation.
Which essentially we're saying we have no objections to it, but we leave it up to you to work out the details. Is that correct?
I would say that's a pretty fair statement.
Okay. Does anyone object to that? Does anyone have any objections to the sign itself? What I've heard tonight is it meets, it meets the requirements, it's not oversized. Our comments now, there's no, there's no lighting, it meets the, it meets the size regulations. There's nothing we can do about the additional billboard sign. So if you find this aesthetically acceptable, I think that we could have a motion to refer to the zoning administrator.
With no additional comments.
With no additional comment.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I have Craig and Edna motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, all right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Kim, for your help. We appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for your attention. I could entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second, all those in favor? Post, thank you, everyone. See you in a couple of weeks.
Good night.
Night.